All right, welcome everybody to the regular Galt City Council meeting for November the 15th of 2022. If you are trying to attempt to watch online, our streaming is down. You can log in through Zoom or watch on the public access channel. The meeting will be posted on the website tomorrow, though, the recording of the meeting. I'll now call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu, Councilmember Papinow, Councilmember Vandenberg,
Here.
Councilmember Lozano,
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. If everyone would please join us for a silent prayer followed by a flag salute. Salute, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Tina, can you please read our replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, November 18th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, November 19th at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item F, Agenda Approval Additions and/or Deletions. Do we have anything this evening? All right. Move on to item G, Presentations. Do we have any presentations this evening?
None this evening.
All right, on to public comment. Tina?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency, public comments may also be submitted as noted above via the options listed on the first page of the agenda for providing live public comment or prior to the meeting via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org by 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting, which will be distributed to city council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting, but will not be read out loud.
All right, do we have any public comment this evening?
Craig Morris.
Mr. Morris. Is the button on up top? Right down the base of the microphone, there's a button, I think.
They'll fix it in the back, once you start talking.
There you go. Good evening, council. My name is Craig Morris. I'm here again for South County Services for the senior luncheon that we're having on December 9th. I know that, I'm trying to get a handle on the number of volunteers we're gonna have, and the reason why that is, is because I don't want to have too many. So everybody has something to do, because we're gonna have 225 seniors there. So I know that Mayor Farmer's gonna be there. I know that Rich Lozano's gonna be there. I'm fairly certain that Paul Sandu is gonna be there. But I just wanted to give Councilman Papinow, did I get that right? And Councilman Vandenberg, I just wanted to see if you could give me a yes or no tonight, just so.
I can give you a definite maybe. I have a court hearing at 9:00 o'clock. That should be done in time for me to get back down here by 11:30.
11:30, okay. Is that's when the seniors come in?
Yeah.
I like to have the volunteers there at 11:00, just to get assignments. But, okay, so I'll put you down for 11:30 then, about or so?
Push it as fast as we can go.
Don't get a ticket.
Court never, you know.
Councilman?
That's a Friday, correct?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I sent myself a note to ask for that day off, and I look forward to it.
Okay, cool. Because I know that city manager's gonna be there, our city attorney's gonna be there, I know the chief's gonna be there, and Tina was, but she kind of bailed.
Not bails.
Okay, so we do have the Commission on Aging is gonna join us, and they're gonna provide 225 gift bags for the seniors. And also, they're gonna have the apple pie. There's gonna be fresh apple pie. And with some whipped cream. And, let's see, so, yeah. So we only have 28 tickets left out of 225. So if any of you know of anybody that would like to come, you can contact South County Services. Because we write down the names, and then you have to come in and pick up the tickets. So we do have 28 left. And that's about it.
Mr. Morris, could just for the people that are watching, can you state exactly what it is you're talking about?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry. Yeah, this is our 16th Annual Senior Luncheon that South County's been putting on. And I've been on every single one. I'm basically the ramrod. And I've been on the board since 2002. So we started out with Meals on Wheels doing it, and then we changed to the Real Men's Club. Now we have James and Curtis Guthmiller, plus three or four of those guys that are gonna be coming back. So we're gonna have barrel cooked chicken, scallop potatoes, coleslaw, corn, and Parker House rolls provided by sponsors.
And the date is?
December 9th.
December 9th?
Yes.
And that's a Wednesday of the week, Friday?
Yes, that's Chabola Center. Yeah, seniors will be at 11:30. We serve at noon.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Look forward to it. Any additional public comment, Tina?
No public comment.
All right. Moving on to item I, Reports by City Council Members on Regional Boards, Commissions, and Committees. Councilman Papinow.
We do not have air quality meetings until the new year. And last night, the city manager, the mayor, and I attended the cast meeting. And I won't get into all of the things we discussed, but very positive updates on safety measures taken both by both school districts, and then also other measures taken, working alongside the police department, and some future educational items that we will be collaborating on to public awareness in the schools. And that was last night.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilman Papinow, I'm sorry, Councilman Vandenberg.
That's okay. I have nothing to report at this time.
All right, Councilman Lozano?
Yeah, just a couple of dates for SECOG. We're starting our new year a little early, so there's gonna be a special meeting on December 1st. The new chair is gonna be Supervisor Kennedy from Sacramento County. And the vice chair is Supervisor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Mike from Placerville. And so that'll, they'll start at the beginning of the year. We did discuss moving out the long-range plan from finishing it in 2024, '23, '24, to pushing it out 2025. And the intent behind that is to really get more public input. And so we'll have a couple of public meetings down here. And they're certainly gonna look to our commissions and committees for input as well on the long-range transportation and housing plan for Sacramento region. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. Myself, I went to a Galt Youth Commission meeting last Monday. It was a good meeting. We decided on some activities that the Youth Commission will be participating in as a group. Some team building trips and exercises, and some volunteering that we're gonna participate in. And I just wanted to wish our mentor, our adult mentor, Ms. Lamson, a speedy recovery. So hopefully she'll be back soon in full strength. And I also attended the cast meeting, as Councilman Papinow mentioned last night, with the members of the school board. City manager attended as well. And we had our school superintendents and representatives from the, both of the school boards. And it was a good discussion. We talked about some safety issues, as Kevin mentioned. With the school districts, it was a very, very good meeting, like he mentioned. There's a lot of things that I was very happy to hear, and some things the city's gonna be collaborating with soon on, with them for education at the schools. So it was a good meeting, and I always look forward to those. And that was pretty much it for me. So with that, we'll move on to our information consent calendar. It is recommended that items 1 through 7 be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. Do I have anything from council? All right, I'm gonna actually pull item J5 for a statement. So with that, I'll be looking for a motion to approve items 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, and 7. And those items are: Receive and file warrants for periods ending November 2nd, 2022. Item 2 is the Treasurer's Report for a period ending October 2022. Item 3 is going to be to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 15.07 of the City of Galt Municipal Code by setting forth an expedited streamlined permitting process for electric vehicle charging stations as required by Government Code 65850.7. Item 4 is to adopt an ordinance to add Chapter 15.34 of the Galt Municipal Code to enact the Applied Technology Council ATC 20 Uniform Placard System. And item 6 is the approval of updated competitive bidding waiver list. And item 7 is to adopt an ordinance of the Galt City Council, the City of Galt, amending Section 5.50.000 of and Chapter 5.752 of the Galt Municipal Code and amending the Joint Powers Agency Agreement related to the Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission. Do I have a motion to approve those?
Removed.
Moved by Councilman Lozano.
Seconded.
Seconded by council, yes.
Mayor, if I may just remind you, go to public comment even for this.
Thank you, sorry. Do we have any public comment regarding the consent calendar?
No public comment.
Okay. Thank you, Frank. Motion was moved by Councilman Lozano and seconded by Vandenberg. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu, I'm sorry, Councilmember Papinow.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Items, those six items approved, 5-0. Item J5, this item I pulled, this is the Summerfield at Twin Cities Road Project. Appeal of request for tentative subdivision map modifications of condition A20. I only pulled this item to state that I was not in favor of this project. The last, actually, the original approval of this project, when we had the old council, I was very much against this project. I thought it was a terrible idea then. I still think it's a terrible idea, and I think it's gone from that to worse. Last meeting, we had an appeal by the developer to make some modifications, which this council did approve. I was, I voted against that as well. But I just wanted to state that this project, to me, is just lipstick on a pig. And I'm very disappointed that it's moving forward. And I'm hoping that in the future, that this council will, considering in a day and age when we have very little control over projects that come before us, and those powers have been stripped away from us. This was an example of when we did have a say in a project. And we didn't, I don't think we made the right decision on it, but I just want to make that statement. So with that, I'll be looking for a motion to approve this item. And it is to adopt a resolution to grant the request for tentative subdivision map modifications of condition A20 for the Summerfield at Twin Cities project.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Vandenberg.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Papinow. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Papinow.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Nay. Approved, 3 to 1. All right. Moving on to item K, Scheduled Matters Notice of Public Hearing. Our first item this evening is gonna be number one, Introduce an Ordinance Adding Section 18.16.080, Sections 15.32.030, Section 18.08.030, 1816.040, 1816.050, and Tables 1828-1 and 1848-2, and repealing Section 1844.150 of the Galt Municipal Code regarding accessory dwelling units, otherwise known as ADUs, and junior accessory dwellings, JADUs, exempt from SEQA under California Public Resources Code Section 21080.17. Mr. Hoffman.
All right. Mayor, members of the council, the city council previously held a public hearing on October 4th, 2022, and voted to approve the ADU ordinance by 5-0 vote. The ordinance was scheduled for a second reading and adoption on October 18th. And in between that time, the state recently adopted new ADU standards that required updating of our ordinance. These modifications were in regard to height limitations, front yard setbacks, and denial justifications. And so staff is requesting the city council redo the public hearing process. Essentially, what the state did was they put a poison pill in the updated language. And if we would have adopted the ordinance, if it wasn't consistent with the new state standards, our ordinance would become invalid. So we're having to redo the process. Working with our legal team, the ordinance was modified. Again, those modifications were strictly in regard to the height of the ADU, up to 18 or 25 feet, depending on the location, how close to transit, requiring certain city front yard setbacks to yield. If an ADU could only fit in that location and still meet side yard setbacks, and requiring the city to justify a denial with a full set of detailed comments describing the deficiencies in the application and how to remedy them, and also removing the automatic repeal in 2025, making the ADU statute permanent. We've made those changes. They're state standards. We don't have the latitude to include them or not put them in. So tonight, staff's asking the council to open a public hearing, receive comments, and then, once you've taken those comments, close the public hearing and introduce and waive a first reading of the ordinance. This is really the same ordinance you saw before with the modifications required by the state now.
All right, thank you, sir. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and then we'll have comments by council. So the public hearing is now open. Do we have any comments by council first on this item? All right. Do we have any speakers in the room that would like to speak on this particular item? Okay. So the public hearing is open regarding the ADU Municipal Code Amendment. And if you'd like to speak, you can come into the podium. Do we have any other comment, Tina?
No public comment.
Okay. Well, with that, then we will close the public comment. And I will be looking for a motion to introduce and waive the first reading by title only in ordinance of the City of Galt, the City Council of the City of Galt, adding Section 18.16.080, amending Sections 15.32.030, 18.0030, 1816.040, 1816.050, Tables 1828-1, 1848-2, and repealing Section 1844.150 of the Galt Municipal Code regarding accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. Do I have a motion to move that forward?
Moved.
Moved by Councilman Lozano. Seconded by Councilmember Papinow. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Papinow.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano. Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Approved, 5-0. All right, moving on to our next item in public hearings. This will be for the respective proposed water and wastewater adjustment rates, rate adjustments, I'm sorry. And give me a second here, Mr. Selling.
Computer locked up on me.
All right, welcome to the City of Galt Public Hearing on Proposed Increases to Water Rates and Wastewater Rates. Before we open the public hearing, I would like to ask our legal counsel to explain the requirements for Proposition 218 governing this public hearing and the proposed adoption of the water rates and the wastewater rates. Mr. Splendario?
Yes, this public hearing was set in compliance with Prop. 218. The city mailed the notice of this public hearing to the record owners of the property subject to the imposition of the proposed water rates and wastewater rates, and to tenants directly liable for the payment of such rates, i.e. customers of record who are not property owners. The date and time of this public hearing is not less than 45 days after the city mailed the water and wastewater public hearing notices to all affected owners and property owners and applicable customers. The purpose of the public hearing is for the city council to hear all oral testimony and consider all written protests concerning the proposed water and wastewater rate increases. It is also held to determine whether there is a majority protest to the proposed rates and whether to proceed with the adoption of the proposed rates. Property owners and tenants are not required to provide oral testimony at today's hearing. If they wish, they may simply submit a written protest directly to the city clerk indicating their opposition to the proposed water rate and wastewater increases. And I'd add that they've had that time throughout this whole comment and review period. However, if they wish the protest to be counted, they must submit a written protest prior to the close of the public hearing tonight and right now, before it closes. Written protests may be submitted during the hearing by delivering the written protest to the city clerk prior to the close of the public comment portion of this public hearing. All valid protests submitted to the city by mail and received by the city since the notice of public hearing was sent will also be counted. The public hearing will be closed after the city council has heard and considered all oral testimony on these items. Oral comments do not qualify as written protests. In order to be counted, the protest must be in writing. State whether it is in opposition to the water rate increase or the wastewater increase. Include the location of the identified parcel, and include the name and signature of the person submitting the written protest. Any protests submitted by email or other electronic means will not be accepted as a formal written protest. If written protests against either of the proposed water rate or wastewater rate increases are presented by a majority of the owners of the identified parcels upon which the charges are to be imposed, or tenants directly liable for the payment of such charges, the city council may not impose the water rate or wastewater increase rate increases as applicable. If there is no majority protest for either of the proposed rates, the city council may impose both rate increases. Pursuant to state law governing Prop. 218 and determining whether majority protest exists, only one written protest per parcel may be counted.
All right, thank you, Mr. Splendario. So the public hearing will be conducted in the following manner. Number one, the city staff will first provide a presentation explaining the proposed rate increases. Number two, after the presentation, the city council will open the public hearing for any persons wishing to speak on this item. Number three, after all oral testimony has been heard, the city council will close the public hearing and, if needed, have a short recess to determine if a majority protest to either of the proposed rate increases has been received. Only those written protests submitted prior to the close of the public hearing will be counted. And lastly, if any members of the public wish to speak at this time, you will be given a maximum of five minutes to do so. We ask you to keep your comments brief and to the point, so that we can allow everyone a chance to speak. Our city clerk will be keeping time for each speaker. You'll be notified when you have reached your maximum allowed time. To facilitate the discussion, any questions from speakers will not be answered during the public hearing. We will now provide a brief presentation on the water and wastewater rates. Then I will open the public hearing. Mr. Selling.
Thank you, and good evening, mayor and council members. For tonight's item, to consider water and wastewater rate adjustments, I wanted to briefly provide a presentation to review what's being proposed. With me tonight is our consultant, Mr. Habib Isaac of IB Consulting. And he will also be available, excuse me, at the end for any questions. And they are the ones who prepared the cost of service studies and the, we'll try it up and see, yeah, and rate study reports. So the key objectives include the following: Providing for the long-term financial stability of the water and wastewater funds, ensuring the respective rates are equitable, and then meet the required state standards. Also, that the rates account for both the capital improvements to keep the systems operating as well as the remaining debt from the state revolving fund loans, and that's on the wastewater side specifically. And then lastly, to comply with Proposition 218, which is the right to vote on local taxes. I want to offer a bit of an apology on this. I know they're kind of small and a little bit hard to see. These are the proposed water rates. And so it's basically, you'll see the current rate on the far left, and then what's being proposed over the next five years as you go to the right. I think the main thing that I want to point out here is that what we're proposing now, and what Galt has not had in the past, is two tiers. And essentially, what that means is there is, the first tier is basically for any accounts, any households, whatnot, that are using nine units of water or less. And for everyone's understanding, a unit is 748 gallons. It's 100 cubic feet. That's how we measure the amount of water. So in the past, we've had comments for like a senior rate or a low-use rate. And while we can't, you know, give specific rates to certain, you know, classifications, if you will, what we can do is essentially a low-use rate. And that's based on the winter average, so that's how we come up with the nine units. And that's, again, that's a winter average. And what that means is there's no outdoor watering, you know, theoretically. It's only indoor water use during the winter. So we have a tier one and tier two. And the way that that works is essentially, for everyone, the first nine units basically are charged at that tier one rate. If you had, in your house, say, you used 15 units in a given month, you would get the tier one rate for the first nine, and then you'd get the tier two rate for the remaining six units. So that's how that would work, okay? I think that that's about what I wanted to note as far as the water rates. I mean, as you can see, I think they're going up initially about five cents in the first year, and then I think it's around a dime or so the following years. On the wastewater side, again, apologies for the difficulty in this and trying to get all that information on one slide. But basically, what we're showing here is the proposed wastewater rates. And for both of these, water and wastewater, it's not just residential, but it's also commercial, so just to clarify that. The thing that I wanted to note here, as far as the wastewater rates go, is the amounts for the state revolving funds, and maybe just for everybody's understanding, the city has taken out two, what we call SRF loans, and that's state revolving fund. That's a statewide loan program where cities and counties can borrow money to improve their systems to meet state standards. So the city took out the first one in 2012, and these are 20-year loans, I believe. Yeah, so that will actually sunset in 2032. And then the second state revolving fund loan, SRF 2, was taken out in 2018. So that will run through 2038. And so what happens is the way that repayment of those loans work is it's a set amount, fixed amount, every year for the city to pay back. But as the city grows, we get more accounts. And so that same dollar amount that we're paying back each year is being spread over the increased number of accounts as the city grows. And so that's why, in years past, the SRF loans have been a bit more. But now, you know, since this was last done, and I should have noted, in the water side, it was last done in 2016. And on the wastewater side, it was last done in 2017. Typically, this happens about every five years or so. Or typically, because that's as far as you can go out when you're doing rate adjustments, so. So anyway, for that, those state revolving fund amounts are lowering, and so that's helping to offset the increases for providing the wastewater treatment services. Wanted to show that this slide basically is just, you know, a cover page for both the public notices. Again, the water notice and the wastewater notice. These were about four-page notices that were sent out, again, to all of the households and businesses, so. So that was the notices that we provided that Mr. Splendario referenced earlier. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation. And again, Mr. Isaac and myself are available for any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Should I open the public hearing first? Mr. Splendario, should I field questions from council first?
You can, the way the script is ordered is you can open the public hearing, take comment, and then-
then have questions. Or if you prefer, you can do questions now and then open the public comment if we're comfortable, as long as we have it clearly in there. The script setup is right now is to open the public hearing, take any public comment, and then you'll have an opportunity to dialogue with staff and ask questions and deliberate amongst yourself.
Okay, then we'll do that. All right. So, we will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item? Do we have any public comment?
I have no public comment.
Okay. So, the public hearing is open. Do any council members have questions for Mr. Selling?
I do have a couple of questions. First of all, thank you for the presentation, and I know that it's been a lot of work that's gone into this over time. A couple of questions that pop up with citizens are the question of with projected growth, two things. One, is there going to be enough water and water to consume with the growth that's approved and/or going to be approved? And then, secondly, is there going to be enough wastewater treatment facility capacity for that? And then, the second part of that that I hear regularly is given the increase in accounts, wouldn't that offset any rate increases that need to come, knowing that there are going to be more people paying into this system? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so.
Like, why do we have to pay more when we have all of these...
Right.
...these homes approved to be built?
Yeah. So, I'll start, and then I'll let Mr. Isaac, he may provide some additional technical insight as far as how the rates were calculated, you know, as far as the growth goes. As far as the growth goes with regard to the water side first, so the city of Galt, a hundred percent of our water comes from the aquifer beneath the city. And so, that's the consumable sub-basin, groundwater sub-basin. And so, that sub-basin of the seven entities that overlay that sub-basin, which we are working in cooperation with, Mr. Vandenberg is a board member on what they call the CGA or the Consumables Groundwater Authority. So, the basin is what the state has determined to be a medium priority basin, which means that there is some overdraft of it, meaning that there's more water being taken out every year than is resupplying the basin, you know, naturally. And so, we have twenty years. We've developed a plan. We have twenty years to show that we are sustainable, meaning that there is no net, you know, extraction of the basin over what is recharging it. There are several projects, as you can probably well imagine, in that plan that are going to take, you know, from a few years to several years, and maybe even ongoing, you know, in perpetuity effectively, to ensure the sustainability of the groundwater basin. Just for a point of reference, and I think the council's heard this before, but maybe as a reminder, the city's share of the groundwater extraction is about four percent overall. And so, I know there's a lot of, you know, concern that as the city grows, you know, and all these homes and things, and they think there's going to be more water extracted. And while that's true to a degree, when you look at the demand that Ag has, it's typically anywhere from one and a half to two and a half, even up to three, depending on the crop, where there are crops, not all of it is. Some of it's rangeland and things. It's just natural. But where there are crops, those are taking, like I said, anywhere from one and a half to three times the amount of water per acre. So, the city is a minor player, if you will, in that. I mean, we are the big population in this basin, but we are, you know, like I said, four percent of that extraction. So, as the city grows, and Galt has historically been pretty low-growth, even with the amount of houses, you know, that are on the books right now, if you will, the developments that we know, that there is no significant concern at this point in time for, you know, meeting the demands of that development. So, that's on the water side. On the wastewater side, so our plant was designed to handle six million gallons per day of treatment capacity. Right now, we average around two-point-two or so million gallons per day throughout the year. Right now, the plant is capacity, I believe, for upwards of two and a half million gallons. So, we anticipate two expansions to get from where we currently are, two and a half, up to six. So, we would probably be looking at a million, million and a half gallons or more expansion for each of those. We don't anticipate the first one for approximately at least five years or more at this point in time. So, the quick answer is that, yes, there's sufficient capacity to meet, you know, the anticipated growth in the near term, and probably the next, you know, couple to five years or so. And then, like I said, the plant is essentially expandable to go up to six million gallons per day. Now, help me again, what were you asking beyond that?
The fact that we are planning for growth at whatever level it happens, right? Point-six percent a year or more. Because of that, why would we need to increase our rates when there are going to be more people paying into the system over time?
Right. So, what... And Mr. Isaac may, you know, get into this a little bit more technically. But as we look at what the state requirements are now, and they are ever-changing, you know, which only adds cost as we go, and we look at what the age of our infrastructure is and what we need to replace over time, through time, so they look at all those things. What are the capital, you know, maintenance costs? What are the replacement costs for, you know, keeping that system up and running, you know, essentially in perpetuity? Obviously, there are additional labor costs, you know, for all elements of labor, you know, in the process, from administration to operations, you know, and treatment and whatnot. So, all of those costs are essentially what's really driving, I think, how they calculate the rates. So, growth is obviously a piece of that, too. But beyond that, that's what I can say. I don't know. Mr. Isaac, did you have anything further you wanted to add? Sure.
Habib Isaac with IB Consulting. The other thing about growth is, we also want to make sure that we're not relying on projections of growth. That may not materialize, especially in this environment where the interest rates are going up and building has slowed down. So, if we did anticipate growth and it doesn't happen, and then that could be potentially where you're... You don't meet your revenue requirements. So, an example of that is, last time, we made sure that we captured all the growth that did occur. We did the same thing this time to add the number of additional units. And then, that showed in the wastewater portion with the SRF loans that the rate per unit actually went down because there's more accounts to spread it over. Similarly, that's the same thing with the fixed account charge, and there's more units of flow to spread the cost over. But we don't assume any type of planned development that's actually going to come online next year or the year after. We wait to see that you outperform, because these notice rates are your ceiling. And if those developments do come in, then you could potentially not go up to that ceiling that's in the notice. You could even go to a lower amount. But again, we don't want to rely on growth happening, and then if it doesn't happen, then we're in a situation where you're not going to meet your revenue needs in our analysis.
Okay, thank you. And that makes perfect sense. I think we've had some projective growth in this city for a long time that hasn't happened, so that makes perfect sense. And then, just one last thing. On the SRF funds, I'm sorry, the loans, those were requirements, you said, by the state to upgrade our system. At any point in that process, did the state offer any resources in terms of financing, financial gift or...
I was going to say, are you thinking grant?
Correct.
I'd have to go back and research. I wasn't here at that time, but we could go back and research. I don't know. I don't know. I know you were involved in the last rate study, but do you recall anything?
I don't believe so, but the SRF alone is very, very favorable financing with the interest rate that you get from SRFs.
Right, right. And I appreciate that. The point I'm trying to make is that yet we have another mandate by the state to make improvements and/or do something locally here that comes with no obvious funding, and it just gets passed down to the rate payer, and that's getting old, so...
Yeah. And also, in terms of growth, though, sorry, growth does pay their fair share of facilities. You build these expansions in advance, so you do have capacity fees where, when they come online and pay their impact fees for library, fires, police, they also pay capacity fees to get service for water and wastewater, and part of those capacity fees is paying back the rate payers for the facilities that have been built in advance of growth occurring. So, those facilities are example of that on the wastewater side.
Yeah. And yeah, I appreciate that. I just... The other side of that is, is that our fees are so... Can be so large in a small town that it stunts economic growth at the commercial level. And so, you always want to be concerned with that, right? And we've done some things here on this council to help offset some of that, but that's all I had. I appreciate it.
I'd like to piggyback on one of his questions. So, if I was understanding you, it's Mr. Isaac's, right? So, if I was understanding what you said correctly, you're saying that although we might see an increase in a rate, once, not projected developments, but one development... Once developments become a reality, then we start spreading those fees amongst the new total number of households, that they could possibly actually see a reduction in somewhere in there, a slight reduction as it gets cost-averaged across. Did I understand that correctly?
I would say, like, say, for example, the adjustments each year, the schedule of the five years that are going up, maybe you don't have to go up to the same, to that extent because you see growth occur. So, we recalibrated the rates, and the SRF loans are the perfect example because it's a fixed cost that doesn't change, where we captured all the units that have come online for over the last five years, and that's why the unit rate for each loan went down. So, that's something you could actually do every five years, or you could look at it every other year or every year to then capture those new units and then have that unit rate go down, but you would probably still increase the rate from where they are today, but maybe you don't have to go up to the maximum that we're showing for each year. You might be able to reduce it a little bit.
And so, and regarding... And also, so regarding the SRF, so you mentioned that those came into place in sixteen and seventeen, so theoretically, if I was to look back at the SRF payments in... Like, looking at my utility bill, my water bill in two thousand and seventeen, there's a chance that that piece of my bill would be less today than it was then.
Absolutely.
Okay. And I know we haven't had a lot of growth since seventeen. I mean, we've had a lot of growth approved, but now we're just starting to see those developments actually come online. So, theoretically, maybe we'll start seeing little pieces of that SRF go down as these developments actually come to fruition, maybe?
Yeah, and in the study, we actually did lower those unit rates because we did capture... I don't know how much more units of service came on.
Do you guys know offhand? Like, I know, isn't it like... Is it like twelve or thirteen dollars per one or something like that?
I think the two, and I... You know what? I had it on a little sticky, and I left it back at the office. But as I recall, I think they were in the, like, two to four-dollar range each on the SRF One and Two. So, in 2017, when the rates were last adjusted, those SRF amounts respectively were like two and four dollars higher for over the last five years than what we're proposing right here today.
Okay, yeah, you said two to four dollars, but I remember them being like somewhere around fifteen dollars each. So, combined, your water bill, you're paying about thirty dollars out of your bill or going to those two loans, if I remember just roughly.
I think it's around low twenties now combined.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so...
It's like nine and twelve, yeah.
Yeah, in the packet, on the mailer that was sent out, the notice that was sent out, I'm looking at the SRF Loan One and Two for residential. So, SRF One is nine dollars and three cents proposed, and Two is twelve dollars and twenty-five cents proposed. And like I said, I could go back and, you know, email or something and provide that information tomorrow, but I believe they were in the two to four dollars higher over the last five years, so...
So, is there any chance, I know Council Lizzano mentioned his frustration with mandates where they come and say, you need to upgrade. Like, in this case, we were told you need to upgrade your plant, but hey, don't worry, we'll loan you the money at a great interest rate. It's like, gee, thanks a lot, you know? And then, we're not even done paying that off, and they come along and say, oh, by the way, we're going to need you to do some other updates, and then we had to take out a second loan, essentially, right? Is there any... I mean, do we have any idea that before we get to 2032 or 2038, that we're going to have another mandate or even another, and we could have three or four loans? Are we just going to have loans forever, or we don't know?
Yeah, I don't... I would say that we, you know, we certainly don't know. We don't... We aren't aware of any such, you know, significant potential mandates on the horizon at this point in time. But, you know, your point is well-taken, Mayor. You know, there could be something a few years down the road.
So, were these upgrades, in fresh memory, I know if... I watched all this back in the day, but were those upgrades where they basically said, we need the water to be, you know, so many parts per million or whatever cleanliness, and now we need to be even better than that, and then that required... What exactly were these improvements, just...
Yeah, I think it was really, I would categorize it kind of two things: meeting state standards that had changed, and the other thing was, there was some plant expansion, too, to allow for future growth for the city, so...
Well, we are good right now up to six million, right? So...
Yeah, we are good right now up to about two and a half million.
Oh, right.
We can expand up to six, yeah.
Right, okay.
So, if, you know, for some reason, you know, things took off development-wise, I could see, you know, three, four, five years, we may be looking at coming to the council requesting, you know, possibly a third loan for expanding the plant.
So, you said we're currently running how much through the plant? Was one point something?
I think the average now is around two-point-two million gallons a day.
And then, we're currently, without expanding the plant, you said we could go up to what?
About two and a half million gallons.
Two and a half, so we got like point-three of growth allowable, right?
About another, yeah, three hundred thousand gallons or so.
So, just... I hate to just make you put you on the spot for math, but just roughly, point-three increase before we have to do expansion. How many houses are we talking about? Mr. Isaac said to get his calculator out or his phone.
I could help with that.
I'm just curious about... I'm just curious of knowing kind of what... We kind of know what projects are out there and the works right now, how many houses, you know? I'm just kind of... It's something to think about, right? Like, when we go to approve development, when are we going to be up against that wall? We're going to be like, oh, we've triggered now this expansion requirement.
The challenge there is a couple of things on that, like, and I'll give Liberty Ranch as an example, which is, I think, around twenty-four hundred homes. Mr. Hoffman may correct me. But I think it's around twenty-four hundred homes. Those homes are obviously not going to be built in a year. They're probably going to be built in five, six, eight years' time. So, it will be a gradual, you know, coming online, if you will. And the same with, you know, I mean, that's the big one, right? I mean, a lot of the other ones are, I think, in the one-to-two-hundred-home development size. So, these things are going to happen gradually, and obviously, you know, the economy is a big factor. Right now, what we're, you know, kind of hearing and seeing is a lot of these developments, you know, some that were saying they were, you know, ready to go forward are now hitting the pause button. So, I think as you saw in the Greenwood public hearing, last council meeting has been bumped out now to next year, so... And that's just one example. I think there's at least two or three others we've heard similar things from where they're, you know, they're buttoning up and, you know, I think, kind of take a wait-and-see approach for the next several months potentially, so... So, I don't know if you get...
It'd be roughly about twelve hundred units plus. And the reason why I say plus is because new development typically are more energy-efficient and with their facilities and their faucets.
That's not too far off for us. I mean, I know I brought this to Mr. Winkler, your predecessor, Mike, way back, but I just... I mentioned him, which I mentioned you, and I'm sure you guys are doing this, so... But I'm just hoping that there's close coordination between your department and Mr. Hoffman's department when we have projects presented to the council, that they know when we get close to that trigger point, because I'd hate for us to be like, oh, wait, you know, we're not... If we, you know, that comes online, we're going to need that expansion, and that expansion's going to take X amount of time, and then we're in kind of a pickle.
Yeah, we don't want to be, you know, essentially playing catch-up. I hear you, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for the presentation. I think it was pretty straightforward. Thank you for answering my questions. Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, just real quickly. Thank you for all the explanations. That was really nice. Two, just for the public's knowledge, you know, the city can't make money on this. This is just a break-even process. I think that's important to mention every time. It's if you don't do this and you're eating away at, you know, other funds, so you simply can't do that. And then, thank you for making the two-tiered system. That's a nice way to actually help people without having to do a lot of paperwork and going house to house, so to speak, so I appreciate it.
And one thing worth pointing out, it's noted in the material, but there was a related policy discussion that we had related to transferring previously the wastewater all the way out to the main line was a... all the way out to the main line was a responsibility even under the street of the homeowner. Correct? And then, uh, so the, uh, policy discussion and it's, uh, can, uh, considered within these rates is, uh, shifting that back to where the property owner is only responsible on their own land and not going to incur those huge expenses, uh, should something go wrong out in the street like that, so.
Yes, that's correct, Councilmember, yes. Thank you for pointing that out.
I remember that discussion. That's, thank you, thank you for bringing that up. Um, do we have any, um, public comment in the room from anybody?
No public comment.
Okay. All right. You anything to add or is that it?
No, I would, I would just, uh, uh, express the city's thanks to Mr. Isaac and his team. Uh, they're great to work with and top-notch, uh, on top of their game. So it's, it's been a real pleasure. As these things go, I mean, it's no fun for anybody to have to, you know, propose rate increases. But, uh, but anyway, I think, uh, I think the city, uh, has been fortunate to, to have such good consultants helping us on this.
Do you want to add one thing? And part of this agenda, you do have the administrative record, which is our report that justifies the rates and the calculations. So that is on file at City from now in perpetuity that, um, people can ask for and review it if they have any questions.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate that. All right, well, if there is nobody who wishes to speak in the room, then I am prepared to close the public hearing. But before I do that, would like to provide anyone who would like to submit or withdraw a written protest, they have the opportunity to do so. Once the public hearing is closed, the City Council may no longer accept any written protests on the proposed water rates or wastewater rate increases. Are there any remaining written protests anyone wishes to deliver to the City Clerk? All right, well, with that, I will close the public hearing. And at this time, I would like to ask the City Clerk whether a recess will be needed to tabulate results or not.
Uh, we do not need a recess.
Okay. I would ask the City Clerk to now provide the City Council with a tabulation result for all valid written protests submitted prior to the close of the public hearing.
Uh, for wastewater rate protest, we have twelve written letters. And for the water rate protest, we have thirteen written letters.
And I'll, and I'll just add that, um, the requisite number of protests we would need for the water rates would be a majority of the owners of the parcels or tenants directly liable for the bill. And we would need four thousand seventy-four. And just putting this on the record, and then for wastewater, we would need, um, a majority would be four thousand seventy-eight written protests. So, um, a majority protest does not exist for the proposed water rates or for the proposed wastewater rates.
All right, thank you, sir. The City Clerk and, uh, Mr. Smendar has advised us that based on the number of valid written protests submitted prior to the close of the public hearing, a majority protest does not exist for the adoption of the proposed water rates or proposed wastewater rates. The City Council, the City Council may now proceed to consider the proposed resolution to adopt the increases to the city's water rates and wastewater rates. As a reminder, the time for public comment has ended and the City Council will not engage directly with any individual customer or a member of the public. Do any members of the City Council wish to speak or call on staff for any clarification with respect to the proposed water and wastewater rates at this time? Okay. Well, the City Council concludes discussion of this item and may now vote on the resolutions. Do I have a motion to approve a resolution to the City of Galt, California, approving the wastewater rate adjustments? Moved by Councilman Papinow.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Vandenberg. I will now call for a roll call.
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Resolution's approved five to zero. I now will entertain a motion to approve the resolution of the City of, the City Council of Galt, City of Galt, California, approving the wastewater rate adjustments.
Just to be clear, I think you said wastewater before, so this would be the water.
Thank you, you're right. Yeah, you're right, I did it in reverse. Thank you for pointing that out. All right, so I, to be clear, I will be entertaining a motion to approve the water rate adjustments.
So moved?
Moved by Councilman Vandenberg.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Lozano. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Resolution approved five to zero. All right, moving on to item L from our regular calendar. Our first item is going to be from the City Manager's Office. The subject is going to be a resolution approving updated salary schedules and one-time benefit payments for unrepresented employees and authorization to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-two to through twenty twenty-three annual budget. Mr. Heinz?
Thank you, Mayor Farmer. On October eighteenth, uh, twenty twenty-two and November first, twenty twenty-two, uh, the City Council approved successor MOUs with the city's three bargaining units. Those bargaining units are the Galt Police Officers Association, the Galt Police, uh, Department Civilians Association and the Galt Public Service Unit. Those, uh, MOUs contain salary adjustments across a three-year period beginning in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three through fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. The Council has now directed city staff to prepare a resolution to approve, uh, salary schedule updates for the unrepresented employees. And that is what's presented here, uh, tonight. And so the chart on page two of five, I'm going to go through that. For the unrepresented professional and confidential, um, these are effective July first, twenty twenty-two through July first, twenty twenty-three, a minimum two percent salary adjustment and no compounding in year two and an additional market salary adjustment for certain classifications to increase market competitiveness over the next two years. The next group is, um, the unrepresented mid-management. Um, again, July first, twenty twenty-two through July first, twenty twenty-three, um, minimum salary, two percent salary adjustment, additional market salary adjustment, um, for certain job classifications. For the unrepresented management, the, the department heads, uh, the salary will, will become effective July first and, uh, twenty twenty-two. And it's, it's a two percent salary adjustment. And again, just to clarify for the public, the agreements for the unrepresented professional confidential and the unrepresented, uh, mid-management are two-year agreements. And the unrepresented management is a, uh, right now, it's just a single-year agreement. Um, in addition to these adjustments, uh, the Council has directed, uh, the staff to provide a two thousand dollar one-time payment, uh, per person for professional, confidential and mid-management employees and a twenty-five hundred one-time payment for management employees. Um, on, uh, pages, uh, three of five and four of five, we lay out the impact, the fiscal impact by fund of these adjustments. And on page three of five, we lay out the professional and confidential and mid-management employees and their impact on the fund. This chart represents a two-year, uh, impact. And then we move to page four of five. And this chart represents the management employees. Again, this is a one-year impact. And the total one-time payments are, um, for the unrepresented employees are a hundred and six thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars. And at the bottom of page four of five, you will see the total cost of this proposal over the two years encompassing all groups will be five hundred and sixty-four thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And so, Mr. Mayor, we, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, uh, staff is recommending approving the updated salary schedules, including two years of salary adjustments for the unrepresented professional confidential and management employees. And approving an updated salary schedule for one year of salary adjustments for unrepresented management employees. And three, authorizing the city manager to amend the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget to fund those salary seven, uh, those salary changes. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any comments from the council on this item? Vandenberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'd like to make a comment, yeah. Uh, during this process, it's, you don't always get to make the choices you want. Uh, but I'm certainly glad we made the choices necessary. I would hate to see us go back to four years ago when we were cutting and slashing and, uh, that was one of my red lines, I guess. I hate to use that term, but that's what comes to mind, that we do not go over budget. So, you know, I, in some respects, everybody didn't get what they wanted, but everybody got something. And even the citizens, to this day, still don't have their parks mowed and maintained as a standard they had four years ago. So, um, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Right. Well, with that, I'll be looking for a motion to adopt a resolution approving updated salary schedules, including two years of salary adjustments for unrepresented professional slash confidential and mid-management employees. And number two, approving an updated salary schedule for one year of the salary adjustments for unrepresented, uh, management employees. And number three, authorizing the city manager to amend the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two slash twenty-three budget to fund salary changes.
I'll move.
Moved by Councilman Lozano.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Papinow. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye, approved four to zero.
Just for clarification, I think I was saying five to zero on the last two public hearings. I apologize. It was four to zero on those last items.
We, we will issue demerits accordingly.
I have several so far, I think. All right, moving on to item two tonight from our Community Development Department. The subject is going to be introduce an ordinance repealing and re-adopting chapter fifteen point zero four of the Galt Municipal Code relating to buildings and construction and adopting the two thousand twenty-two additions of the California Building Standards Code. Mr. Hoffman?
All right, Mayor, members of the council. The first item tonight is, is again, the introduction of the two thousand twenty-two building code. With me is your building official, Zach Carver. And I'm going to turn, turn it over to him. And he's going to describe the changes that you're seeing with this new twenty twenty-two code as opposed to what we had with twenty nineteen.
Good evening, councilmembers. So the building code is updated, uh, every three years, uh, as mandated by the state. They make changes. It'll be, come effective on January first, twenty twenty-three. And they do this to continue to provide enforceable standards of life, health and safety in our public buildings, our public spaces and residential dwellings. And that it ensures that these uses are safe for the public and private homes. These codes will cover commercial and residential buildings, electrical, plumbing and mechanical systems, the existing and historical buildings, swimming pools, the fire code and the energy code. Uh, some of the highlights of the changes, there's, there's many changes, but most of them are driven by the energy code. And so there's enhanced requirements for efficiency, water conservation, interior environment, air quality and things like that. Also, there's added safety features to protect occupants of homes and buildings where there's energy storage systems, commonly known as batteries or battery backup systems. There's stringent guidelines for the continued use of electric water heating systems. It's something that the state wants to see more of. Uh, there's several requirements for what they call aging in place and fall protection. Uh, these are things built into the construction now of homes uh, that make it easier to adapt the home as, as people get older and need wheelchairs, walkers and things like that. And so now builders have to incorporate these starting January one, twenty twenty-three. This adoption is specific to Galt because of its topography, geography, climate and environment. And there's also appropriate amendments that we've adopted that are relative to our city. Uh, our role as a building department is to enforce these codes and provide these safe places to live and work, um, and visit. And they maintain consistency with the city by enforcing codes on all construction proj-, uh, projects equally. And they're consistent with neighboring communities that are adopting the same codes. There's no budget impact, the cost of the code books, staff training, continuing education and the implementation of the codes are covered with the annual community development budget. Are there any questions from the council?
I have a quick question. Are any of those new changes, anything that you would say is like significant? Like where it's really gonna? I mean, I know there's like all this stuff like title, some of this stuff's like Title twenty-four stuff probably, right? So, but is there anything that you, that pops out in your mind that you could say, yeah, this is, this is a big one that make an impact?
Yeah, good question. Uh, probably the energies, uh, the energy code requirements. Um, right now, if you have a new home or starting in twenty twenty-three and you want to put a gas water heater in, you also have to provide space and infrastructure for a future electric water heater. Meaning that if that, if somebody wants to remove that, it's easier for them to do so. Infrastructure's there, uh, electricity's there, the water's there to just tie right into.
Those are fairly small though anyways, though, aren't they?
They are, they don't take up a lot of space. But you have to provide, somewhere in your construction plan has to be a provision for that.
Well, tell me briefly about the, the, the senior stuff you talked about. What, what is some of that? Can you give me examples?
Absolutely. So requirement now going in twenty twenty-three would be that on a floor level, typically the ground floor, you must have a bathroom door that it's thirty-six inches wide and a bedroom door that's thirty-six inches wide. Most of your common doors in your home are probably thirty-two inches. Um, also building infrastructure, uh, backing, blocking for adding grab bars around the toilet and to get in and out of the shower. All that has to be done behind the walls. It has to be, um, notated and given to the homeowner upon taking over the home. So they don't have to go tear things apart to put those, those things in. It's already there for them to do.
You're talking, they require one bedroom in the house and at least one bedroom and one bathroom to have three O doors?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah.
And then you're talking about the backing? So you're talking about blocking in the wall, like fire blocking at certain heights to, to mount grab bars and things?
Correct, yeah, around the toilet and getting in and out of shower bathtub area.
Interesting.
And that's so people can stay in their homes longer and not be displaced because maybe they can't afford, uh, to do those things, tear out a whole bathroom just to add those things.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else have questions for me? Okay. Proceed.
Sorry, but that, that was it, just any questions?
Yep. All right. Okay, well. And we don't have any public comment on this item? Tina?
No public comment.
All right. All right, sorry, guys, I lost where I'm at here. All right.
That's gonna, that's gonna offer, this hearing is a little bit different because it starts off, since we're basically adopting a, a code outside of our municipal code, you start with a departmental hearing and you're actually setting, at our December sixth meeting will actually be the public hearing. So it, it kind of operates a little bit backwards from what we typically do for both the building code and the fire code.
Yeah, and that's just required by state law for these, um, building code adoptions, that you have the public hearing at the second time. So this is informational to introduce it and to waive the title, waive the reading by title only. And then it'll come back on December sixth for a formal public hearing.
Okay. So I, I just, sorry, I got confused because there's two here, they, they read similar. I was trying to, um, we're on item, uh, L two, correct?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. All right, so I, I am going to open the public, uh, hearing, which I did not do that. So the public hearing is open. Again, if anybody wishes to make a public comment in the room, you may do so on this particular item. Does anybody wish to speak on this item in the chambers? And we do not have any public comment outside of that? Okay. All right, well, with that, then I will close the public comment. And I will be looking for a motion to introduce and waive the first reading by title only of an ordinance of the City Council of Galt repealing and replacing chapter fifteen point zero four of the Galt Municipal Code relating to building and construction and adopting by reference the two thousand twenty-two California Administrative Code, California Building Code, California Residential Code, California Plumbing Code, California Mechanical Code, California Electrical Code, the Green Building Standards Code, the existing building code, California Historical- Mechanical Code, California Electrical Code, the Green Building Standards Code, the existing building code, California Historical Building Code, reference standards, the energy code, and the California Fire Code, and making local amendments. And next, schedule a public hearing.
Just, just that part is for the, for the motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Vandenberg.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Papinow. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Approved four to zero. Do I need to ask for a motion for the, okay, all right. All right, thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to our next item is L3, which is to introduce an ordinance repealing and re-adopting Chapter 15.28 of the Galt Municipal Code relating to buildings and construction and adopting the 2022 addition of the California Fire Code. Sequa exempt under Section 15061B3. Mr. Hoffman?
Sure. And tonight, Mayor, members of the council, we have Lance Ray, our Fire Marshal, as well as Amber Anderson, our Deputy Fire Marshal, presenting the 2022 California Fire Code.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Lance Ray. I am your Fire Marshal at Casumus Fire. I do have my subject matter expert, Amber Anderson, here with me. Before I get started, this is my first time getting an opportunity to present to you, and I'm going to do that so that we don't have the feedback there. I've met many of you at community events, but I just wanted to say thank you to the staff for allowing me the opportunity to present tonight. So, we're doing something very similar to what just happened with the building code. We're asking you to introduce and waive the first reading by title only. I won't go through all of that, but we are repealing a section of your municipal code and adopting the referenced and amended 2022 Fire Code. We're asking you to schedule a public hearing on December 6th. I stole slides out of my presentation to my board to, as I had a little bit of difficulty operating with the template, but I just wanted to point out that the prevention of fire is a core mission of the Casumus Service District. It's something we spend a considerable amount of time and effort on, and this is kind of the ground rules, if you will, for those efforts. This is the triennial code adoption. We do this every three years. We've already started work at the national level on the 2025 update. It takes a significant amount of time, effort, and technical experts to get this put in place. And the intent of the process to kind of update our rules and regulations to be consistent with kind of modern standards. This progress includes the adoption of the Building Standards Code and Title 24. And moving through this as quickly as possible, this is very similar. We, our ordinance, if you, is a local ordinance, a 21, is kind of a accumulation of multiple years. So we will have, while we're repealing the entire ordinance and replacing it, it's not all new. We're making a few changes generally to a few sections. There was one section that was just an oversight. There's a few items that we have to address, similar to what you've heard tonight in both water and other things. Because of changes at the state level, we needed to update our language. The process was led by our Deputy Fire Marshal, Amber Anderson. She actually led a collaborative group of fire departments throughout Sacramento County. We do this so that our development community has a relatively consistent set of rules. If you're building a home in Galt, it's pretty consistent with what you might have in Rancho Cordova or others. We try to be as close as we can, recognizing that all of our jurisdictions are just a little bit different. But we do recognize that our development partners work throughout this county and San Joaquin County, and we want those rules to be as similar as possible. Additionally, as part of our outreach, we reached out to both the City of Galt, City of El Grove, and we reached out to the Industry Working Group, which is specifically related to the development of single-family housing. Just to make sure that they're aware of what was coming, what we intended to implement, and give them an opportunity to comment. There's a couple of things here that we can talk about, things that the Fire Code, the Fire Code's always a few years behind what we're seeing. Lithium-ion battery storage is a pressing issue. It's something that's kind of developing. The technology's developing. Our electric vehicles and the charging stations and those things, we're a little behind in the technology. The code is attempting to catch up. Additionally, we do have some additional requirements for emergency responder radios. These bigger, larger buildings that you're starting to see in California, a million square feet and more. Your portable radio is basically a paperweight when you get into the middle of them. So, beginning in 2015, excuse me, and then again in 18, emergency responder radios, we're starting to get better at that. And the frequencies and interference, and so there's some updates there. Energy storage systems, everybody's starting to see the home-based battery system for their solar. Again, we want to make sure that those are done correctly, and we're catching up with existing technology. Our existing language updated and amended, we did fix one fire sprinkler requirement where that we had missed. It was in the 2016 code, somehow dropped out of the 19 code and is now back. It is consistent with what we've done in the past related to the construction of factories. We've made a few amendments to clarify our water supply requirements. And then we also have added back in NFPA 13R, which is, if you're familiar with it, it's a single-family home, when it's constructed, will have plastic piping for the sprinkler system. A commercial building will have metal piping for a sprinkler system. 13R allows you to do the plastic piping in an apartment complex. So it saves costs, and the evidence shows that it's just as effective. The Fire Code as amended would become, with R ordinance, becomes effective, when I say R, as the Casumus Service District, would become effective on January 1st and remain in effect until the end of the next three-year cycle. We're asking that the council, as we talked about, waive the first reading of the ordinance. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to go ahead and open the public comment while we, while the council asks this question. So, the public, I'm sorry, the public hearing. I'm out of sorts tonight, I'm sorry. I have a question, though. Is there any, is there anything that's changed? You were mentioning the lithium batteries and stuff like that, but is there anything that's, that's different about code regarding residents or new residential houses regarding, you know, the transition to more electric vehicles and people having these charging stations possibly in their garages and things, or not really?
There's some minor changes related to, so the Fire Code also adopts a series of standards below it, the NFPA 1372, and they regulate that. So there are some changes that regulate the fire sprinkler changes in the garage if you put a battery in there. I believe it codified the, basically, the vehicle protection so somebody doesn't drive through their garage and hit the battery system. So there's a couple of minor changes, but nothing significant that would deter an individual from being able to put a battery storage system in their home.
Okay. I was thinking of it more like, you know, you have this, you know, you have your Tesla in your garage now, and the Tesla basically has this ginormous battery, right? So you were mentioning battery storage, I was thinking, well, what if you have your car in there? And I was just wondering if that's even a relevant question?
A very relevant question. I don't know that the code's caught up with it. The electric vehicle issues that we're seeing that are related to thermal runaway, which is some of the stuff you'll see as this fire looks like it's shooting out of the bottom of the vehicle. The vehicle's not regulated by the Fire Code. The structure is. Right now, the structure is not designed to really handle that fire. It's very possible the 2025 code will catch up. We are doing things locally using standards to basically ensure that the fire sprinkler system there has a fire sprinkler head that can do the best it can to make sure that the residents of the home can get out. But it's not going to protect your residents the way, if you think of like fire sprinklers extinguishing the fire, that's likely not going to happen. It's going to give you additional time. You'll be able to escape. That's what residential sprinklers are designed to do. But as the electric vehicles age, we're seeing more recalls, we're seeing more of a fire issue, and I expect that the Fire Code will catch up in the next three years.
All new homes built do require fire sprinklers. Am I wrong?
Correct. January 1 to 2010 in the state of California.
Counsel?
Yeah, if I may. How does car batteries and lithium ion, probably more specifically, interact with water? It was my present understanding that water is actually bad to pour onto a car, our electric car fire.
The, so, the evidence is limited because we've not had a, a lot of them in the fire service. We're seeing more as these vehicles get to the seven, eight, nine, 10 years old here in our community. We do know from a recent hurricane that submerging the vehicles underwater south can generate basically a short which can lead to a fire. We've had incidents in the fire service where we've put out an electric vehicle fire, or so we thought, and it reignited. There's the attempt now to basically drown the vehicle after a fire. We're learning, really, as these, these batteries age, the best way to go about them. And so the traditional, put the fire out, think we're good to go, you know, get the report, take care of the folks, get the vehicle off the road, isn't enough. We are doing more to kind of follow the vehicle to the storage yard, make sure it's in a location where it's not going to cause problems.
Yeah, that's, I'm sorry. As an electrician, I find that interesting because water and electricity is not a good mix in general unless it's purified, but... So, my instinct tells me not to put water on an electric car fire, but...
We're, we're absolutely, we're going to use our foam to avoid the ability for electric current to travel the water stream, so when we put the Class A foam on it, it gives us that opportunity to make sure that it doesn't harm us. But as we continue to see these, and you know, thermal runaway, the concern, this isn't really Fire Code related, but thermal runaway is a concern, is that the damage could have happened in a vehicle accident, and then multiple hours later, you can have the chemical reaction that causes the fire. And so we're kind of still learning how to deal with that in the fire service.
Right, so when it comes to a garage, this would add, you'd require more sprinklers or less, or?
They're there now. Fire sprinklers since 2000, for the newer homes, 2010. If you were to go and put a a battery storage system that's specific for the home into your garage, in a home built before 2010 that does not have fire sprinklers, you would be required to add two sprinklers in your garage, or four sprinklers in your garage to basically protect against this. But again, the code is catching up, and I expect you'll see more of it in 2025.
Okay, so it's, it's not so much like on the battery, it's just to protect the entire, everything in the, in that area?
Correct. Residential fire sprinklers are built to give you the opportunity to, for it to be identified using your smoke detector, smoke alarm, and then evacuate the house in time. They're not meant to really put the fire out and like a commercial fire sprinkler would be. They're just to kind of buy you time, and so this is what the, what we have in place now.
You just told me I had a downgrade in my home. Thank you.
That was not my intent, I promise.
I, I think it's interesting what you just said. You're saying the sprinklers buy time, because when you were saying, when you mentioned about the commercial requiring the metal sprinkler pipes versus the home which uses like the PEC stuff, right?
Right.
Okay, so, or is it the PECs, like the plumbing, or is it different?
It's CPVC, so, yes.
Okay, so, so what I think is interesting is, I'm thinking about fire and the system which is used to suppress a fire. I mean, plastic obviously has obviously a way lower melting point than, say, copper pipe or steel pipe, right? So, I mean, essentially, this, this whole system could just be inoperable if the fire got to...
It could be. Theoretically, that, that's one of the concerns. That's why the systems are, are kind of classified differently. Really, the difference in the commercial design is the attic protection. It's going to be every inch. It's going to be your attic, it's going to be your sub, it's anything that has obstruction of four feet or more. In a single-family home, it's going to protect the living space in the garage. Your attic's not going to be protected. And so it's built to do different things. The sprinkler head design, and so the temperature of the sprinkler heads and other things are going to go off at different times. So they're very different systems. A commercial system's going to have the ability for the fire department to pump into and augment. You've seen those FDCs that are always out in front of commercial buildings and things like that. Those are not in residential for the point that we're not going to augment that sprinkler system. We're going to go in and fight that fire with your traditional fire attack. And so it's just a different look at doing the same job, but what we've found is they're very effective. Getting fire, especially, excuse me, water into a rooming contents fire from a fire sprinkler, incredibly effective at keeping the temperature down, extending that time. And really, in a community like Galt, the fire department with the response time like we do, we're going to be there. The sprinkler's going to hold that fire in place. We're going to be there and put it out. You're not going to lose, you'll be back in your home that night versus a home that doesn't have a fire sprinkler. It can expand beyond the rooming contents, and you may not be back in your home for a year. So that's the benefit of the fire sprinkler.
All right, thank you. I already asked so many questions. I just think it's fascinating.
You, you open a can of worms when you ask me fire sprinkler questions, so. Apologize for getting long-winded.
All right. Do we have any, the public hearing is open, so do we have any comment from anybody in the room?
No public comment.
All right, and no comment outside the? Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, well, with that, I'll be looking for a motion, I'm sorry, I will be closing the public comment, period, the public hearing, sorry. And I'll be looking for a motion to introduce and waive the first reading by title only of an ordinance of the City Council of Galt to repeal and re-adopt Chapter 15.28 of the Galt Municipal Code relating to buildings and construction and adopting by reference the 2022 California Fire Code and making legal amendments. Do I have a motion to move that?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Lozano, and I will second it. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Approved four to zero. All right, moving on to item M, communication. Do we have any this evening?
No communication.
All right. Item N, city clerk's report.
Nothing.
All right. Item O, comments by staff. Mr. Heinz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's hear from Public Works Director Mike Selling, see if there's any more to add.
Actually, some good news, a correction. I was apparently quoting the peak sewer capacity at 2.2 million gallons per day. We're actually about 1.8 million average, so we've got some additional capacity there, so. The other thing is, just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving next week. Thank you.
All right, let's go with Police Chief Brian Kalonowski.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is just to re, well, two things. We have upcoming on the 28th of this month, it's a Monday, at noon, we will be at the memorial honoring the 10-year anniversary of Roy Markham, who was killed in the line of duty. He's a Sacramento County Animal Control Officer. So we'll be doing, our honor guard will be doing a wreath placement and a quick moment of silence, and then a recording of the events that happened that day when he lost his life. And so that's being handled by the honor guard and members of the department. And we invite the members of the public to be there. Again, that's Monday, November 28th at 12 o'clock here at the memorial. The second item we have, I mentioned it a couple of weeks ago to get it started early, is on Tuesday, December 13th, between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m. The police department will be holding an open house, our holiday open house, entitled How Galt PD Stopped the Grinch. And so we will have a reading by our grandpa and grandma cops on how the Grinch stole Christmas, a tour of the police department, and booking photos with the Grinch along with hot chocolate and cookies for the kids. So those are the two events that we have on, upcoming for the police department, and we invite everybody to come and tour the department. We have some new carpeting and different things that we've been doing, so we'd like you to come see it. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Chief? Thank you, Chief. Economic Development Manager, Amy Mendez.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Just wanted to let everybody know that on December 1st, we are going to be releasing a retail survey for the community. That'll be a Survey Monkey link. It'll be on social media, in our newsletter. We'll probably highlight it in our newsletter and try to get as many folks as we can responding to that from the community. And questions asked will be related to retail, restaurants, fast casual, sit-down restaurants, fast food restaurants, types of retail, specific retailers that folks would like to see, also some information, just trying to collect data on where people are shopping at outside of Galt so that we can kind of get a grasp on where people in the community are going to shop for daily need stuff, but also for apparel and shoes and home goods and those types of things. So I encourage you to share the information when you guys see it come out so we can get as many responses as possible. It'll be really helpful for our retail attraction consultant that we're working with to make sure that we're kind of targeting the right, you know, I think we have an idea of what folks in the community want, but this will really give us some substance along that, so. And I think we'll have it open until the end of December, so we're going to run it for a month and try to get as much traction as we can. And then we'll report back. Our retail consultant should be here in January, providing a presentation on the market analysis that they've completed, and they will be kicking off their retail attraction efforts in January, February. The retail community goes to sleep, I think, for the entire month of December. Nobody's very responsive, so the first of the year will be a good time, I think, for us to start the recruitment effort. So, we will report back once we have... So we will report back once we have some concrete information. Have questions?
Well, this will be like, this will be a Survey Monkey, like, we'll share the, the survey, but they'll click on it and then they'll take the survey, it's not gonna be like a post where people can comment and start getting in discussion.
No.
That, that would be a train.
I don't wanna track that, no, I'd much rather, Survey Monkey's a really good platform for open-ended questions too, just so we can get an idea of, you know, we can't, I can't put in, it would be a laundry list of retailers if I was really trying to get a, you know, a precise number, but general feedback is really gonna be helpful for us, and Survey Monkey's able to track words and, you know, retailers or restaurants specifically, so we can at least provide that information. And then we can report back to the community on what we heard, what we've, you know, received from them, and any successes we have moving forward, you know, we can kind of highlight that, so that's what we'll be working on.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go with Community Development Director Craig Hoffman.
Mayor, members of the council, nothing further from me, you satisfied or you survived six items from planning, that deserves an award.
Congratulations, council. Let's go with Matt Boring, our Finance Director.
Good evening, I have no updates tonight.
All righty, thank you, sir. And last, but certainly not least, let's go with our Parks and Rec Director, Armando Solis. Well, maybe not last.
We'll see. Did they send you over some slides? All right, so I'll just give you a verbal report that Saturday, December third, is lighting of the night event. We are adding a vendor fair on Civic Drive with that this year. I personally went through with staff all the new decorations that you guys approved earlier this year, and believe me, there's a ton of decorations, I, I really think you guys are gonna be happy with them, and...
So, so no more old candles?
We are not putting out any old stuff, so if people go, well, this used to be here, we're throwing all that out. So we've purchased enough stuff to put in different locations, not necessarily, we're doing something big on Chabola Hills versus doing something down the, where the trees are, we're gonna add, you'll be really happy with that, I, I really just want you guys to see it. I don't want you guys to be surprised that they're gonna start putting stuff up tomorrow, they're gonna start decorating the tree tomorrow, but we will not turn anything on until after Thanksgiving, but it just takes that long to do that. We have a company, Jesse the Tree Guy, he's volunteered to decorate our tree for us this year, he has a boom lift, so we won't have to rent one of those, and he'll be decorating it for us, so I was really happy about that. And then, then we have the performances, we're accepting parade entries, so if you guys know anybody who wants to be part of the parade, we'd love to have them, and we'll have our performances from our elementary school districts again, so, and I think that's about it right now. You guys have any questions about the parade or anything?
No, look forward to seeing the new stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna be really nice.
Look forward to the event. Thank you, Armando.
All right, thank you. And City Attorney Frank Splendario, any reports?
Nothing, just have a good Thanksgiving.
All right. City Clerk Hubert?
Nothing.
All right, Mr. Mayor, that concludes staff comments.
All right, thank you, sir. Moving on to comments by city council or future agenda items.
Mr. Papino?
Happy Thanksgiving, and who knows, maybe by Thanksgiving, we'll actually have a vote Right? That's all I have.
Yeah, all right, Councilman Vandenberg?
That was funny. I think I already made the most important statement earlier in the meeting, I, I do, I am very thankful for all that staff does, it's a lot of work, I know code is, being electrician and reading through the National Electrical Code, it's, it's very tedious and it always changes, so it's, it's an, it's a constant battle. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody, hug your loved ones, appreciate them while they're around, and here's a good opportunity to do it coming Thanksgiving and Christmas, and that's all, Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir.
I have nothing other than, than to say happy Thanksgiving, and for those of you that have the opportunity to not work during the time, please do so, thank you to those that are going to be working, our first responders specifically here in our city, our police department and dispatchers, but if you can, take your pack off a little bit and relax with family.
Me, just, yeah, thank you to staff, thank you for bearing with me and getting through all that reading of all those code stuff, and happy Thanksgiving, everybody, hopefully Armando will get a nice little gift of Measure Q passes, we're all crossing our fingers, or at least I am, and hopefully we'll know in a couple of weeks if that's the case, so. Yeah, a couple of weeks, yeah. So anyways, everybody have a good holiday, be safe, and we'll see you guys back on December sixth. Good night. Meeting adjourned. At seven thirty-seven, Tina?